Hey. What's up in the meeting? Acting Planning Board, whatever the day is, I don't know. Second. October. Take a minute to read the minutes and I'll launch into motion.
Ooh.
And it's small font.
Great.
Do you like that?
I can barely read. I need some more verified cheers. I gotta up my percentage. The Code Enforcement Office was asked if you recommend this?
Yes, I could tell from what I've seen, it was yours. Yoli. Take the chance, Yoli asked Ken what his recommendation was.
That was awesome.
Yeah.
Why? Yeah, it's just kind of an awkward phrase. The Code Enforcement Office was asked if you recommend this? Oh, I see. I figured that one further I did.
It's two mistakes.
I think I moved forward a bit.
Right down.
I'm gonna be except a minute. Second. Any other changes or corrections that you have? All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, nay? Done deal? Aye. Carroa? Something about you guys. Alright. So. Next. A reconsideration of Debra Rattello. You ready? Ten ten, Michelle Dry, Fab Four Twenty Four lot. Fifteen best practical location application approved at the meeting of February seven, 2013. Which was actually March seventh, 2013. And, uh...
When we took a look at this last year, the house was so close to the water. What they were focused on was the setback from the house to the water. With the new house being relocated?
Yes, we do.
It's so far back that if you measure to the side, that's really your closest point? So we were at, uh... Push it back. Thirty-five. So if you measure over this way, that's the closest point now. The focus was right here before. Uh, the thirty-five feet, it just barely makes it. I think it does make it, doesn't it?
It does.
It's just the weaves or overhangs or anything. So they were hoping to reduce it from thirty-five to thirty-three. So again, uh, that's a certified plot plan over there. They have plenty of room coming to this point here that we talked about. Actually even more than thirty-five. But originally, when the house was ten feet from the water, that's where we were measuring. And there was no reason to measure over here with the new foundation location. That meets it by a couple of feet, but when you come over this way, it doesn't make a...
It does, but it's not using, well, while we're using overhangs. So they were hoping to reduce it. Who figured this out?
Before and after.
After.
The survey, when the certified plot plans required, that's when we tried to pick it up. Before the house is all constructed, catch it at the foundation stage.
Oh, you mean this, we're not gonna cut a corner off? Like the young guy who wrote it?
No.
Well, come on, that's so cool, I love your weather.
So the house makes it off, it's just a corner.
He just wants rather than thirty-five feet away, he wants thirty-three feet away.
Correct.
So plead your case and make it good.
I made a mistake. I was, when I first measured and came in, I was focused on this, what I thought was the shortest distance. And measuring the foundation, everything else were all right. And then all of a sudden, the surveyor's committed to do the certified at the end. And suddenly he goes this way, and I'm like, whoops. There's a little bit of a inlet where the neighbors have their dock. And I'm, you know, a foot and a half short right there to the overhangs. The foundation still meets, the house still meets, but all the soffits and rakes are gonna have a little bit of a...
Right.
Overhangs, so, you know, I should've asked for thirty, thirty, thirty-three at the beginning, but I was trying to get as far back as I could when I first asked for thirty-five. Um, figuring, you know, we went from like here, ten to thirty were a lot better, but I was, I wasn't giving myself any extra leeway for, um...
Well, it surprised all of us. None of us, none of us were looking at that measurement. And from the picture, you know, you wouldn't even guess that it would be that close, you know?
So. What is the distance that we're reducing to thirty?
Thirty.
The other buttons.
This is where we were measuring before? And then move the new house back to here? And suddenly the surveyor had this short spot over here? So I need, I'm still in...
The times, that's in a budding lot, why does that?
Cause it's closest to the water regardless who's lot it is. We were measuring his lot and then this little hole in there, so... And the foundation still meets, but the design of the house drip end is pretty much won't.
Oh, no drip end, bad.
I never realized that we have to take into consideration.
Yeah, this is a corner. Yeah, it could be even across the street a lot of times, it's only on the side of the street that's really affecting the area.
I'm going through that line curve right now, too.
I make a motion that we allow Scott to, uh, do this. It was not intentional. Disregard of, uh, regulation or anything. It was just a, uh, a, uh, oversight due to, uh...
Oh, yeah, that's right.
Mitigating circumstances. That's it.
Any further discussion? All's in favor, aye?
Aye.
All's opposed, nay? It's a done deal.
Thank you very much.
Saved by the Acting Planning Board.
And the president. Have a seat. Thank you.
Is that it? Is that yours? What happened to the one I got from you?
That was, that's...
You, this is his. Alright. Okay, here we are. Come on, wheels. Okay. Where was... Yes! I'm going home. Ryan, where's the legal office?
I think we were on page eight or something like that.
That's all?
Well, it's like the beginning of the... Yeah, it's going to be a big one.
Disturbance in stormwater management?
Yeah.
Five twenty-five two-two-one? Alright. Okay, and we're looking at the May fifth, 2014 edition, correct?
That's what I'm looking at, virgin six, so impulse.
Virgin six?
Down at the bottom, it says V six, correct?
Well, that's what it means.
Yeah.
Oh, if it was Roman numerals, I would've known. V six. Alright. Yeah, go ahead.
Did we ever, I, I had a note from August seventh that we were supposed to cover pages six through ten for like the next meeting in September and so on. But I don't see that we ever actually went through those.
Yeah, we did, you weren't here.
I think we got against town, it's coming up, I was okay, but we could go over it again.
No, no, I...
I kinda thought we did too, cause I did have... Yeah, we're out, specifically on page ten. Three, four, and five, I wrote down redundant, cause I think they all said pretty much the same thing. Didn't they? Alright, yes, we did it that far.
Yeah, and there's, we might've gotten that far, okay?
I'm not in this meeting.
I have a note that says for nine-four fourteen, we need to do the stormwater management vision measures. Yeah, two-five. That would be starting at the bottom of page ten.
Everything really, like, section two one. The whole stormwater management section is just tough on me. Except for the very beginning of it.
Are you disavowing it?
We're avowing?
Disavowing it.
I never vowed it. I just find that, yeah, especially once you get to five forty-five, one-two-two-three, you start running into, like you said, redundant lines, repetitive stuff, stuff that's repeated, that's coming out of books. Uh, while we fill through it, Laura.
Well, go ahead, let's start shooting it down.
So where, where are you starting? Page ten?
Let's, let's go with the old section three, general design requirements, start there at the bottom of page ten. Good enough? Uh, let's see, blah, blah, blah.
That's a, that's a complete repetition of the beginning of the book, of the ordinance. It's like it starts all over again in more detail. And it, once you get down to section, section two, A and B, or four, A and B, you get into stuff that it creates buffers and distances that, what's the point of having a formula? If you're gonna create standards that are so specific that they might not be site appropriate on our shorelands? So I, I think at that point, it just begins to get undeductive. And it's also confusing whether, when they're talking about LIDs and BMPs and the same thing, um, it's hard to tell whether they're talking about... This whole section is supposed to be about the, the larger stormwater projects, right? The larger ones, the incidentals.
Yes. I, I think so.
Now, but that's where it gets confusing, because they start right back with the LIDs again. And it becomes very confusing where you're talking, what scale project you're talking about. If you're talking about the little ones or the big ones, no.
So, so why is it confusing you guys when you guys are the ones who put this together?
We didn't put this together. This was written by Forrest Nell.
They went back to the original one that we did a few years ago. The one that we initially, cause it was so wordy, and because we had already addressed some parts of stormwater management in our ordinance, we gave it the Southern Maine Regional. He implemented all that into our existing. But for whatever reason, it was re-looked at. And when they re-looked at, they wanted to go back to the original document and try and do a little more obfuscation. Alright? Oh, no, wrong word, sorry.
I, I would ask, uh, for a little more, I guess, precise criticism of this thing, with some suggestions being made, uh, you know, in a constructive way, rather than just trying to take this thing apart. Cause I think we have an obligation to, uh, for the work that has been, uh, put into it to date. Despite the halping, uh, stop and go method by which we've been reviewing this damn thing. We owe it to the, uh, resource to try and wring something out of this. Whether it's confusing because of our, uh, lack of coordination or continuity in terms of review, I think is maybe a large part of it. Cause when, um, Jess and I and Gavin and, uh...
Paul.
Paul reviewed it, I thought there was some, there were some reservations, but no large-scale, um, revision of this was...
We never got to the end. After the citations, we never did this section. Except we all lived in like the redevelopment thing, we all read it, but we've never discussed specifically.
We did go chapter by chapter through the whole thing before we got to the citations. We had over every page.
I know this must've been in the meeting I missed.
Well, one of them probably, but I, I do remember you being there for a good number of them, whatever, you were page by page through this time.
I just think it would be helpful, perhaps organizationally, if we could completely separate all the non-incidental from the incidental stuff. Because when it starts going back and forth...
Well, for one, just a point to, to address the first, um, statement there. Section three, as, as entitled, is general design requirements. It does not specify, nor I think is it intended to specify, um, incidental or non-incidental. I think these are provisions which apply to all sites, uh, necessary LID practices. The, the, uh, non-incidental, um, i.e. the ones that would be maybe triggered by a site plan review level development, I think starts on page twelve with the redevelopment. I thought we were...
I think that's incidental. You mean the big ones?
What's that?
You mean bigger projects?
Yeah.
Okay, that's incidental.
No, non-incidental. Non-incidental.
It's a big one.
Yeah.
Right.
Cause it's not like an incidental, so I kind of complain about incidental.
Well, not that much to look at.
Well, that's what it is.
The redevelopment, that's very...
That being said...
Well, yeah, redevelopment's pretty much as big as we get at, isn't it?
There's nowhere to town, we'll never do it.
Well, it'd be like the acting committee post, you know?
Rather than, um, pulling this thing apart, I, I would make a request that we, um, maybe set it aside for a couple of meetings until we can find a, a time that accommodates a, uh...
We've got tonight, we said this a month ago.
I know that.
Phil was crying that we weren't doing anything, so we set this meeting aside. In fact, we, we shouldn't have taken these guys.
What I'm saying is, is everybody, does everybody feel up to speed on, on doing that tonight?
Yes, because something else is gonna come up before we put it off.
Because if we start out on a, on a negative tack where we're not being constructive and offering alternatives, I, I would wish that we would hold up until we can reach that point. That's just a...
The more time goes by, the rest you're gonna get them.
Yeah, you have to set it back from page one.
Yeah, I think I've gone over this before.
And walking in with a smile on our faces isn't gonna make this be any better than it is.
Yeah, but we, we went over the whole document, like we all said. And at that time, none of us thought we should really take large pieces of it out or change it that much. You know, and we, we were sitting there for, I don't know, eight months or something, and no one said it then.
I did. I said it frequently, I said it...
Well, we didn't have any, we didn't ever get a direction on it.
We have to start seriously editing it.
Okay, that's fine, but we never actually took to the words and found a direction and did it.
Right. Okay, we didn't, I agree with you there.
So you're not gonna wanna do it now, you're saying?
That's what I thought this was about.
Okay, that's fine, let's just get all on the same page.
Well, we need to present something to the town that the people are gonna be able to understand and, and agree with.
Well, this is very understandable. What Justin's saying is that it's redundant, that means they just explain it twice. It's quite understandable.
Sometimes two and three times, and that doesn't help a document when you go over the same thing two or three different times.
That's okay, but I think it is understandable, it's just they've made too much information.
Well, all I meant...
That's what we're saying.
It's understandable to us. I haven't been through it enough, to some of us. But to the regular, you go upstairs and grab somebody who's paying his taxes right now and give them this and ask them to read it now, but, you know, dollars and doughnuts, you won't be able to get past the first page. Unless you wanna do something that this pertains to, right, anyway? And, maybe.
Well, I think Paul did it, he understood it perfectly, Paul.
The suggestion I'm making is, if you wanna critique it, please, you know, have an alternative notion in mind. That's all, that's what I'm asking. Otherwise, we just, we just waste the time that went into, uh, editing this thing and the time that, you know, was put into originating in the first place. And when, you know, we're not making it way if we just critique it without a suggestion of how to improve it.
Well, I suggest redesign, redesigning it and taking out the redundancies and making sure that it can live up to some of these standards. You know, cause once you, if you have a formula that is fluid, that's the whole reason why it works, right? Because you're taking in the specific parameters of a property. And then you throw into a non-conforming property on the shoreline, something like, uh, the exception is in shoreline where roads and driveways shall be designed, constructed, maintained, empty into, onto unscarfied buffer strip at least fifty feet plus blah, 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 and no slopes and, you know, um, what's the point of having the initial formula?
Well, let's see, ideal situation.
I mean, the whole idea is we're trying to deal with non-conforming properties here.
Some people question that, but not everyone.
Yeah, but how do you solve the problem of the non-conforming property when you're imposing a conformity that the properties don't fit into, to begin with?
That's just an ideal situation.
Does it say that they have to conform to that?
It said, well, okay, if you go, absolutely, page eleven, section four, this is just an example. I mean, we started before this, but it's the one I underline the most. It's on, in B.
Oh, yeah, I had, I had a question mark to that whole thing.
Yeah. At least fifty feet plus two times the average slope and width between the outflow point of the ditch or culvert and the normalized water line with a tributary stream uplit edge or wetland. The planning board may reduce the minimum buffer on slopes less than fifteen. And then somewhere else on another parameter, this is, you can't do something at, anything at twenty percent, which I know, you know, it's not desirable to things.
Well, let's stop for one second.
But...
You know, let's stay with B, uh, try to focus on the specific part of the thing.
When does the planning, see, I don't understand, the planning board may reduce, how are we involved in somebody's stormwater management plan?
Right, well, why do you rule that we're, that we're then gonna change our mind about for every...
We're not gonna be looking at every stormwater management plan that comes down the pipe. That's all gonna be handled by this or, you know...
Actually, the stormwater management plans will, we will see a lot of them, because aren't they, they're really big projects?
Well, I mean, perhaps...
That's what's confusing here, where do we distinguish between the little project and the big project?
Anything's a stormwater management plan, big and little.
Yeah, but they distinguish earlier, they, one's got a set of...
This is just, this is general requirements, that it covers both. Both types of disturbances.
When it throws in that the planning board may reduce the minimum buffer requirement on slopes less than fifteen, if the applicant can demonstrate that disturbance within the buffer is in conjunction with improving stormwater quality, or the, blah, 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 blah.
Their formula should solve that in the first place.
Well, maybe, at least instead of the planning board, we should have code enforcement officers, so they say...
Or the regu, or the regulatory agency or what I call...
Yeah, a couple of different people, maybe not the planning board, code enforcement or, you know, York County Soil and Water, cause these people would probably be looking for some sort of plan anyway.
And how do we cope with projects where, where the existing structures that are being, where the new development is already within fifty feet of water? Or culvert, or whatever it has been on...
You mean the existing development?
Yeah, like, like the project we just looked at, I mean...
Well, we get, you know, County Soil and Water, they're in there.
Shoreland.
These are just kind of like the, you know, the, if you could do this, that would be the best, but they just do what they can.
That's not what zoning ordinances are for. Zoning ordinances are to tell people what they can do, not to confuse them with a...
Well, this is a more complicated issue than just a, you know, there's no line or, you know, this is the next zone or it's... It, it's so site-specific that, you know, we're gonna have to have people looking at each one, not necessarily us, but...
But that's what the formula in the beginning does. All I'm saying about these, when it gets into these general design requirements, is that we start falling back into the rut of having properties that don't live up to those standards to begin with.
But we do have properties that don't live up to those standards, that's okay.
But what do we, then how do we resolve the problem of them wanting to do something on their property? It makes this...
Just like we do with the best practical, the pack of locations, or, you know, Ken comes up with the best thing that's, you know, we can figure out.
I, I just see this justice as giving some coherence to the process that we undergo now with BPLs. It's kind of codifying that.
I think it starts to give coherence to it and then it stops, it becomes incoherent. Because you get so lost in these new sets of details. I mean, here you have this nice crypts clear, you have to prevent, you know, you've got this size project, you present this list of documents, you've got that size project, you present that list of documents. It's great up to that point. And then we start getting into the general requirements of the site and you, you run into the problem of the fact that we've got sites that aren't gonna live up to it. I don't know how to say it any other way. We already have a problem, I mean, the reason why we have conditional uses because of non-conforming properties. So how do you resolve stormwater problems on non-conforming properties? If you set standards that, that are only for properties that can conform?
Well, wouldn't that last sentence that we were, um, scratching our heads over, address those kinds of issues where you have a situation that does not conform, as you say? This allows the planning board to, um, reduce the buffer on certain slopes if, uh, they can get a seal of approval from York County Soil and Water or something. I think this...
This isn't even talking about non-conforming lots, though. This is just talking about...
It's assuming all the lots are conforming.
No, well, it's just setting the bar. We gotta set it somewhere.
Well, we haven't approved a house more than fifty feet from a shore, from a water.
That's just the best crack possible occasion. I mean, we, we do plenty of building in the, in the shoreline zone, Ken can tell you about this. That's more than a hundred feet back, we don't have to, have to look at it as a planning board and, and these things would, uh, work for them.
I wonder if some of this isn't also alluding to new construction versus something that's existing?
Yeah.
Because it, that sentence, the exceptions in the shoreline, the roads and drivers shall be designed, constructed, maintained, to empty onto unscarfied buffer strip at least fifty feet plus... Now, this is where I get stupid up with this, plus two times the average slope and blah, 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 bullshit, outflow crap, that's bullshit. But, we're talking about, it appears to me, new construction versus something that's existing, you know? So...
Right, we're not asking existing conditions to just come up to this, just by putting it in place. It's just when they put it in a new road, that's what they wanna do.
Right, well, maybe we should, uh, divide this and deal with, existing is dealt with this way, and new construction is dealt with this way when we have much, we have more say over, you know, where they can put stuff. You know, they won't be non-conforming, they're gonna be, they're gonna start being conforming. So we don't have to bend over backwards. You know, maybe, maybe there'll all be two sets of rules? Or, I don't know. It's a mess.
I just think the general requirement sections are necessary.
What does everyone else think? I mean, you, you guys looked over the thing.
Thursday.
Every two weeks, we only look at it once every three months, but I mean, what do you think?
I guess I was misunderstood the process. You know, we, we did this whole thing once. Spent X number of time on it. We decided that wasn't gonna work. Whatever the reason, doesn't matter. It wasn't gonna work, okay? So now we've come up with a committee that's going to look at it and it's gonna try and put it together. My assumption was, that's what the committee was gonna do, so that now they get focused on it, they, they work on it, they meet... They, they work on it. They meet aside from our regular meetings. And then to come back here and say, okay, what do you want to do? Well, in my mind, we, we let you guys do that. Now, I'm getting this, I'm getting the sense that you haven't even really come to an agreement as to what you wanted to do at these outside meetings.
It was a majority and a minority of meetings.
Well, you know, and again, I go back to saying in my mind, I'm saying.
There were many different opinions.
I would go back and say that it's the committee, if the majority said this, okay, then that's what I'm, I'm willing to accept. Okay, if there's something that all of a sudden somebody spots that's egregious, it's, it just doesn't make any sense at all. That's different. But I'm willing to accept that. You guys have become the professionals in my mind at looking at this thing. To come in here and look, and I have a big hump on that same paragraph that's there in that B because it didn't make sense to me either. But the rest of it, you know, okay, I can follow it a little bit here and there. I don't have the expertise with it. But I'm willing to accept that you guys did and go with the majority at that point.
First of all, there were only four people. I mean, when you're thinking of majority.
There's only five people on the planning board. I mean, there's.
Seven.
Well, there's two alternates. There's five people who vote. So, I mean, when you say four, that's a pretty good representation, I think.
Yeah, if you get too many people, you get like we get here and you don't get anything done. You just, everybody's got a different idea.
On the committee floor, when one person shows dissension, then you get a response like, well, I think we all have to be positive about this. In other words, if the dissension would just not speak, then we'd all be just fine. And, you know, that's really how it works.
That's not what I meant. I was merely saying, I, I think the effort that has gone into this warrants a, a bit of constructive criticism and not just, you know, blowing the thing up.
I'm not blowing it up. I have construction. I think it's constructive.
Maybe what you should do, Jess, is come up with a paragraph. So you want to just X out of this thing and then we can consider each one. As a small group or a big group or whatever, but if you actually came up with which ones you want to cross out, then we can consider them.
Well, not only that, but I mean.
That's kind of similar.
Alternative language?
True, yeah.
I didn't know you guys were going to go back to the original forest belt. See, I thought that was pretty much history. And I thought you were going to deal with the one that we were going to, we had planned on bringing to the town two summers ago.
That's essentially what we started with.
Well, when Paul read over the document, he agreed that this one made more sense to him than the new one. So we, we decided, oh, we'll go with this one because we all liked it.
The new one got kind of mixed up between the large and the small scale somewhere in it. We were trying to put phosphorus measurements on every property. Which, you know, and it, it stopped making sense at some point. I don't know if it was too many cooks during the week between meetings, whatever, but it got confusing. And I feel like partly maybe it was my fault. I tried to support it because for the same reason Tom wanted to support this whole thing, because a lot of work had been put into it. And so I was just complacent. If that's what the majority wants, that's what, you know, we'll go along with it. But then we, we had the opportunity to get through it, but it took us all winter to get through really the beginning of this. And then to go through the citations and I think I brought up in several meetings, we need to seriously edit and shorten it. And everyone, you know, it's like later.
Edit and shorten it.
Well, we're at that area.
Okay, we're looking at that B right there, but maybe we should just identify, you know, maybe half dozen areas like that for everyone to look at and then at the next meeting, go through them and just come up with, you know, you have, people have proposed for an alternate language or they want to take the whole thing out or they think it's fine. And we go around and everybody kind of gives in their two cents on each one of those areas identified because otherwise we're, we're kind of just talking about the whole document.
Right.
And we never got, you know, specific in those areas during the subcommittee, which, well, I think we should have, I guess, but.
Should we just start with general design requirements and start there and go forward with section by section?
Right. If we, if we like the first part of it, just fine. And we can leave that be for now.
And I think maybe it would be helpful if we, if we get some kind of collective sense of what even something as simple a phrase as general design requirements applies to. I, I think it applies to all projects to which we're proposing that LID management BMPs are going to be applicable for, large and small. I hope there's some consensus on that.
Well, I agree. I mean, I think that's the word, what the word general is speaking to.
So we differentiated, going back to what Chip said a few minutes ago, whether or not these are going to work for new construction or, you know, best possible locations later. Have, have we differentiated between that?
We did not because we didn't see a need to differentiate those two. They both have, have similar problems in, in many instances and both require similar approaches.
So in your mind, this could work for either one?
Right, yeah.
I think general design requirements should be those requirements that can be used for both new and existing.
That's what it is.
And that means anything in here addresses both, not just one. So B wouldn't even belong because that deals with new. You would save that for your next group, which is, you know, design and new construction. I mean, because general means something that's going to apply to everything. When you start throwing, just looking at a specific thing that doesn't belong under that heading, it belongs at, you know, somewhere else, I think. But I think the whole thing is just way too wordy though and too confusing. I mean, you know, we've looked, we've all looked at this in different writings for, you know, a couple of years now. Three different ways we've looked at this and, you know, nobody's happy with any of it. And just because there's been a lot of work done doesn't mean that, oh, so.
I'll ask you.
That's the first way to get it not passed.
I'll ask you a specific question. For B, where do you see in that that is earmarked specifically for new construction?
The exception is in the shoreline district where roads and driveways shall be designed, constructed and maintained to empty onto an unscarfied buffer strip at least 50 feet plus two times the average slope and width between the outflow point of the ditch or culvert and the normal high water line of a water body, tributary stream or upland edge of a wetland. That's not going to deal with some guy who's 30 feet from the water. Because anything he does there, he's already within the 50-foot setback. Plus, further back because you've got two times the, the average slope. And two times how? Two times 15%. So that's 30%. So 30%, how do you add that to the 50-feet setback? What's that got to do with it? Does the 30% turn into 30 feet? Do we add to the 50? What does that mean?
50 feet plus two times the average slope. If you have a slope.
What's the M R I?
I'm, I'm trying to address your question. 50 feet plus two times the average slope. If the average slope is 15 degrees, you would say two times 15 equals 30 feet, coming up with a sum.
Feet.
Feet. Two times the average slope in width.
Well, that's, that's talking about the slope and width. That's not saying that we use feet. And then add those feet to the 50. I think they ought to be in there somewhere.
It could be clarified.
But I mean, we need to go clear. I think, I think it's a two, but it's a common sense notion that as we.
There's nothing common sense about this.
Increase the pitch of the slope in which you're working with. You want to increase the, the distance between the disturbance and the outflow point of the ditch or culvert and the resource of the water body, tributary stream or upland edge.
Fine, but let's put feet in there, not yards, not meters, not anything else. So right there, we're already adding to it.
At least 50 feet plus two times the average slope expressed in feet.
But I mean, the, the first part of the document has already listed the documents that have to be provided and therefore the measurements that have to be taken, right? So.
You mean page one? Back of that part?
It does, uh, management of incidental and management of non- incidental, those things. And then it goes on to, this is the document that needs produced, right? Or is that after the general section? I, I don't know. I just, it may be easier if we separate low-impact development from big-impact development somehow. But this general section is the one that really is the part we were most.
I think it's just trying to reiterate general BMPs or, or general rules of activity that, that apply to, I mean, exceptions. We deal with exceptions in our own point regularly. This preamble is in the graphic ordinance. It says that, you know, this ordinance shall apply to these activities except the exceptions are X, Y, and Z.
So are there any specific areas in the general design requirements that we want to try and express them clearly or eliminate or reword?
Well, just, most of that whole section, I can't, has, has already been said.
So you're not happy with like site design?
Wait, could we, could you?
Page 10.
Well, just everything looks okay. Let's go. You want to just start.
Chip's got one. He's not going to.
Yeah, just start.
I mean, show the redundancy. That's all I'm asking. Feel a little specific with these critiques.
Site design approaches include LID to reduce runoff rates. Volume and flutin loads shall be implemented to the maximum. Okay, general purpose. While the construction development shall be designed to minimize stormwater runoff on the site in excess of blah, blah, in natural blah, blah, blah. And then we say it again. We say it again under purpose. The purpose of the ordinance is established to prevent runoff. You know, it, and it, it's pretty clear in the beginning the direction that things are going. And it just, when you get to the second half, it's just piling it on.
Well, once again, I guess I would ask for specific deletions and, and coming to an understanding that the notions that are redundant are indeed expressed initially somewhere previously.
She just remembered what it was.
That's just one line. I don't see, I don't see why, why it matters. We had that three times. You know, people are reading the thing.
It's writing.
Well, no one likes that. Well, let's, let's come up with it open. And I think it's fine for, to reiterate those things because those are the important aspects of the document. That's what, that's the goal and purpose.
Yes, but, well.
So go ahead and cross over mountains and look at it, see if it still works for everyone. I mean, that's, that's okay. I just, personally, I can't cross any, I don't, I'm not finding a lot that I would just rip right out myself, you know? And that's where we were at at the subcommittee too.
I think you have to do it. You have to take it apart and make an outline, you know, like, we've been trying to go word by word, page by page. You can't really edit that way sometimes. I mean, maybe we should just.
Well, I don't mind existing. I think the existing outline and framing of this thing is fine. We generally want to work within the structure there, but you want to restructure the whole thing. So we have to come up with that new structure.
Doesn't really pertain much. It adds more confusion than clarification.
I guess we disagree.
I guess so.
Yeah, I mean, that's why, that's where we're at, you know, it's hard.
Jess, I, I, I think we did a fair amount of, because Paul was kind of our,
He was like the leader in terms of facilitating the discussion. He'd say, let's go here, here, here.
He would throw, he would throw alternatives out all the time. Almost every meeting, he would have a sense of, you know, should we, should we try to have this part come first and, you know, follow with this? And I can remember.
I did some of that too.
Quite, you know, strenuously working on the flow of the thing and what should follow what.
That was the beginning of the document.
Right, right. So, I mean, we, it isn't like we, we weren't thorough in terms of our analysis of this thing. It just, it just troubles me that there's, there's this undefined discomfort about it and nothing being offered in its place. And in that absence, I sense that this was going to be the tenor of the meeting. I think, I would wish we would just do a little constructive criticism with a pencil and paper and come in with some alternative language that we can consider. If, if it's that troublesome.
Well, it's not troublesome, it's unnecessary. How's that? It just seems.
All I'm asking for is some specifics. If you want to X out this, let's just make sure that the thought is, is expressed, if it's an important thought to express. Let's make sure it's expressed somewhere previously.
Okay, so you want to site design. Number one, these lines have been already stated previously. So we could just say site design instead, for number one, site design requirements should, and then we have A, minimize, minimalization and disconnection of the purpose service, blah, blah. And we could take the rest of that out. Just like, you know, we could just have a little short phrase that lead into A through D there. Instead of all that, that we were suggesting. Well, let's come up with our wording of it and then see what everyone likes there. Site design approaches should, right? And then you have a colon and then you have A through D. How is that? Should see to or?
Okay, now how about number two?
Would you like that? Do you like that for number one? Is this just trying to list it for number one for a second?
Let someone else put the subject of what they want in the one.
No, I'd like everyone to try and focus on one part of the document so we can look at it as a group.
Site design approaches shall be implemented to minimize, except practical, such, can I just take off that including LEDs part? But see, in the purpose, it's just reiterating the purpose.
Well, let's let someone else from, that wasn't on the subcommittee chime in then.
Yeah, but she's not a role. Let her go because I've got, I'm looking at the original 525 and I'm happy with that. Page 78, one paragraph, done. But that's just me.
Under purpose, we have minimize increase in stormwater runoff from new development in order to reduce flooding, siltation, streambank erosion, maintaining the integrity of streamline channels through the use of low-impact development techniques. Minimize increase in phosphorus because caused by storm, this is way in the beginning.
Yeah, I think that's why we could take it out.
So why say it again?
Okay, well, let's see, but, yeah, I think that's fine. Let's, let's just kind of nail down some wording for it and then we can go on to number two.
If it's repeating something, just cross it out. Don't add it, don't.
Well, we need to say, we can't just go site design and then minimalization and disconnection of, I mean, we could. We could do that, just site design heading and then A, B, C, and D, just cross out the one altogether. But if we had a little phrase there, we could.
I would cancel, I would, because A, B. I would cancel, I would, because A, B, C, and D have all really been said before, earlier in the document.
Where?
I was just reading them, under purpose.
Well, you want to just get rid of that whole, want to just get rid of number one? The whole, of whole, number one, one, A, B, C, and D? And then just start with looking at two. Applicants to demonstrate why use of non-trivial and or non-social approaches such as those described.
Every time we did get close to discussing some of this stuff, yeah, I find this meeting would all be...
Well, we just, we didn't have it, it doesn't seem like we had the pieces to go, go individually through these things. We just kept coming back to just whole-scale chopping out areas, which we kind of just have to go through them a little more in detail. Make sure we can just chop it right out.
Okay.
How about looking at number one then again? Site design approaches including LID to reduce runoff rates um, shall...
Or should, meanwhile?
Forget, forget the volumes through practical and somehow tie in such techniques included but are not limited to. Site design approaches including LID to reduce runoff rates may consist of, well, I don't know, that's a practical. Runoff rates. Shall be applied to maximize, to maximize...
Site design approaches should include LID, such techniques included but are not limited to, A through D.
Sounds good.
How about site design approaches may...
Shall.
Should include that.
Shall include but not be limited to. Site design approaches shall include but not be limited to, and then we go A, B, C, D. And, and all of this is to save one little phrase? Well, that's because it's a phrase we've said three times, but... I don't understand what this arrests, but it seems to be under at this point is to take care of an issue that we're going to eliminate maybe eight words?
I'd like to eliminate two pages, three pages.
I'd like to eliminate eleven pages.
Well, and if we put, like, specific design requirements come out of the general, which if we just go back to the beginning and put the low-impact development plan requirements in with the definition of it in the very front, then we get, we're just so many confusing...
We didn't do that?
What ifs? Yeah, you can take specific design requirements, then they start with the LID, and then they do the stormwater management plan. Each one of those sections could be put in directly following the section where they're described in the earlier part of the document.
What page is that?
That would be, so you'd have your, you've got your levels of disturbance where that's described. Right? So then, if you did your levels of, you did your incidental disturbance, and then everything that had to do with incidental disturbances, including the LID plan, the specific design requirements of the low-impact development plan, put that right with the right up with the incidental, and then the same with the non- incidental. Put the stormwater management plan specifically with the non- incidental. And, and eliminate the general stuff, the, the general section that just seems to... You get, you read so far and you've got this fairly orderly thing, and then suddenly you get whacked all over again with all these redefining, you know, restating the purpose and then putting in specific limitations on properties in a section of town where we know that there's properties that can't live up to those expectations. And redevelopment, I mean, how long, we talked about talking about the redevelopment, and I don't think we ever got through it. I don't think it even applies to Acton, and I don't think the phosphorus stuff that applies to Acton.
We were going to leave redevelopment in there, but we were considering who we need to site plan because that's what it is.
Yeah, well, maybe, maybe the whole non- incidental stuff should be, if we separated them so that we have incidental and non- incidental, everything pertaining to one and the other in separate sections instead of going back and forth, then we can decide, then, yeah, it might be that you want to put the non- incidental stuff in site plan instead of everywhere.
Well, if you wanted to try and do that, I guess try it out, try it on one of them and see if it works. I think there's, there's a lot of cross, uh... There's a lot of overlap in the measures that are brought to bear on the incidental and non- incidental. That's why maybe we didn't, it wasn't set up that way. That, that particular point that you raised, we never saw that in any of the drafts as a format.
No, we didn't.
To, and to suggest now that that's maybe the way to do it. For my, my purposes, I guess, it seems a little like going out on a limb in terms of editing, but more power to you if you want to do it and see if it works on one of them. I'm not sure that it does, because I think there's a significant amount of overlap in the...
I think just having one section that accompanies both as opposed to two, two lines of similar thinking. Because the biggest difference between incidental lines, you know, is just the scale of the thing, the techniques are largely similar. And that's, that's how I mean, the general covers both of them. But, yeah, I mean, if you come with a draft, I would absolutely look at it and see how it read.
Maybe Chip and I just can work on this.
I, I know what I want, so I don't need to work on it. It's getting you people to see the light.
In the absence of having the patience to work on the thing in the first place, I don't know if that's about criticism.
Yeah, it is for me.
Enough said.
Anyway, what I'm saying now is no different than what I said last winter. I just never got a chance to...
Well, I'd like to hear from my mom.
I've been thinking this for a long time.
Well, and you'll be a little bit...
We maybe can do it, or should we?
Yeah, can, of course.
That would be, could be helpful.
You could just not feel what we're doing now, just make your head spin. Should I grab a glass of wine?
I think it's important maybe to keep in mind that this is, the reason this has come to pass, the necessity of this is we're kind of flying by the seat of our pants now when we say to folks, when we, when we review these BPLs, you know, God bless you and talk to your kind of son-in-law, and we hope everything works out all right. But I was talking earlier in the week with Ken, maybe, about having taking a little bit of a temperature, so to speak, of the, of the effectiveness of how we're working right now with the means of a before and after site visit so that we can actually see if the practices that we're putting in place on, on some of these more problematic blocks, you know, the ones with a lot of topol and stuff, are indeed a good solution, a viable solution. We've heard from a butler on the Fos Road project that some of the measures that were put in there to access the lot were fine for what they wanted to do, but the, the lot, I guess, was is being sold, or, yeah, I guess it's on the market now, is that right? So, and, and some of the access measures are not sustainable. The road was designed with some pine logs to hold the down-slope section of the damn thing, and those aren't going to last much longer, twenty or thirty years. And after that, you've got a wholesale lens lat going down to the bottom of the little property on Fos Road. So I think it's important to get our arms around, are we being effective now with some of the remediations that we're bringing into play on, on these, on these tough lots? I think we'll all, we'll all agree that they, they are indeed tough. By and large, they shouldn't have been built on in the first place. And it's like trying to bring, you know, measures to bear, or rectify something that never should have been done in the first place, that's a hard problem to solve. And then I think part of the, the desire for bringing this before the voters came largely from folks like Linda Shire and company, who once a year, every year, paddle around the lakes and see these things, you know, roads and driveways and little bits of development here and there where projects have been, you know, undertaken. And they're the ones that are doing a lot of the carrying of the water and these things, you know? So I think it's important that the town in the guise of something like this step up to the problem and try to implement regulations in the place of what are now voluntary measures that may or may not be maintained or implemented properly in the first place.
I agree with you one hundred percent. But I don't think that this, that every page of this document is necessary to do that. And maybe we want something simpler, maybe we do, well, I know Ken, at one point, because he doesn't really want checklists.
I'd thank you to bring us some suggestions, that's all I guess I can say. Could we go on to something else, maybe, Chip?
Uh, that's all we got. Isn't it? What's new?
I don't know if we got this, the packets? We just received a letter today, email came in today, so we can get it into your packets next week. It was somebody stuck in the resource protection, hopefully you guys will take a look into that. We talked about it over the last week, proposing that under conditional use, single-family dwellings and their accessories be allowed in resource protection. So it was just a letter we got today from somebody else in the resource protection that can't do anything, and I haven't had a chance to read the letter, but we'll get you guys all a copy for next time.
This wasn't addressed, there was a new legislation about this. I thought there was something.
It, it is allowed. You can do the conditional use, but we have to adopt it into our ordinance.
At the state level, it is, but we haven't adopted it yet, is that...
It's been there for a while, we didn't adopt it the last couple of rounds of zoning changes we had. At the state level, they've removed the habitat, wildlife habitat, there's a few things they've removed.
Right.
But this wouldn't consider any of that, they were just looking for under conditional use, being able to allow to build in the resource protection zone.
It was, it was, Chip, it was something that the committee that worked on the Shawan zoning ordinances, the revamp when we were given the new state document, we considered it, but it seemed to fly in the face of the whole implementation, the notion of implementing a resource protection district. So the committee at the time said, no, we didn't want to consider it.
Well, is this anything that anyone thinks now that we should reconsider, or just say, you know, screw it, you're not building on our feet? Go prime your river?
I think it would benefit us to, to listen to the points that they're trying to raise.
Well, nothing can be done until it's past the town meeting.
Correct.
So...
Yeah, we're the ones that would give them a, a name and a ball. Not, not that that plays into the part of the town meeting, but it's a recommendation, or not. I think it pains us to the folks that are troubled by it, we ought to look at it.
Yeah, because I don't read the letter, or do you know that look at some of the cases?
I don't know. I'm lying, they're asking us to consider.
It was a draft from the town attorney with the selectman last fall, which was similar, just needs a burbage change, it was last minute.
Oh, it's when it came in here that day, right?
Yeah, very, very, very last minutes. So they tabled it, basically we'd be relooking at that again. At the state level, the state's resource protection is only ten acres of wetland or greater. The town is two acres of forested wetland, so it's just poor soil. So we have a tremendous amount of resource protection now with existing residential dwellings in it or existing lots that now have a buffer zone in it and have now become non-buildable. We've had several, several peoples affected by this. We had a survey coming in with a few clients last year that once we tabled this, they didn't come in, but I, I think if you guys don't look at it, there will be a rebellion of what's there with your resource protection.
Well, they can always bring a petition.
Correct.
If we're going to forward anything...
Is it, is it the buffers that are really...
Yeah, that's a lot of it, yeah. Yeah, because you're not going two hundred fifty feet with the buffers for just forested wetlands, so you may have to, with that buffer statute, you may have to still go another five hundred feet to actually get wetland, so you've just got poor soil in that area. So you've got that buffer zone keeping you away from the poor soils.
Did what the selectman proposed at the last minute last year, does that address this issue, or is that something different?
Yeah, would give the planning more scaring.
Could you spare copies that for us for next time? Or whenever, if we're, if we want to revisit this, then if you could scare copies and... Do we want to revisit this?
I make a motion that we look into it.
Yeah.
I think we did that at the end of the last meeting.
Yeah, I think we did decide, we decided two weeks ago.
And this was just in a letter that it came in.
You know, please, double to, on zone.
Fine, super, done deal. All right, and next meeting is the public hearing, right?
Yep.
And that's for Ashco, so that'll probably take a while. How about, well, and that's October, so then we got the first one in November, which is, where's that calendar? That would be November sixth. Maybe between now and then gives you people a mind. You want to look at this mess again.
What's going to happen if between now and then?
See, you have a better view of the other things that are going to come in, that we're not going to be able to touch next time. Well, no, 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 if we just, if we just deal with...
I think we should stick with the general design requirement section and come up with some suggestions.
Well, that's, that's what I'm saying.
Yeah.
Look at pages ten through, whatever the general design, ten through the end. And if you have a problem with something, see if you can't if, see that you're able to address it to us succinctly. If you got a change you want to make, fine.
Good way to look at it too would be drop that date for when you need it done and produced, if you're trying for this year and work backwards.
Well, what is, when do they want stuff in?
That was January last year, last part of January, twenty-fourth.
Well, we got it, and we've got to look at this November, the first meeting in November. We'll, we'll look at the RP business and and we'll look at this. And unless something major comes in, then put that for the second meeting in November. Wait, that's going to be...
Is that going to be Thanksgiving twenty?
Oh, yeah, that'll be fine, because Thanksgiving's the twenty-seventh. I'll swipe that.
Kenny, did you have that onsite meeting at Tel Sessos, yeah?
Yeah, I had one with, um, an excavation contractor and have, have called the owners to tell them, you know, we can still move forward with different ways to really look at it again. Talked with the architects who were leaning towards filing appeals and going that process versus relooking at the site. So we agreed on a contract that they'd used for excavation, and the excavation contractor went out there and thought there was no way to move the house at all, when he met with the architect. And then I had met with the excavation contractor as well, and we sat and pulling tape measures, marking up the ground, and really looking at it. He quickly saw there's an easy 20 feet to move it back, so.
Now, is this something that they can appeal, our decision?
Administrative appeal through the zoning board would be the first shot in Superior Court. I'd have to reread the ordinance how it's having, if it was straight to Superior Court or, um, through the zoning board as an administrative appeal.
Yeah. I can't recall that we've had anybody appeal a best possible location, and I don't know that. Well, if it was, it was a long time ago.
No.
How about that riverside one would be a good one?
No, no, they would be on the list for resource protections.
Yeah. I'd be surprised if it's something that can be appealed, but maybe it is. Anyway, so next meeting is the, uh, public hearing for 12th Street, whatever the heck it's called. And here upstairs. Well, shucks.
They make this a crowd.
Yeah, well, let's see how many people show up. I guess, maybe we'll shoot for upstairs, all right? But you can use the little camera, unless you want to use that whole mess, I don't care. But depending on how many people show up, you know, we may just get all the way in with microphones and all that. Oh, we didn't just have a blackout date, you know? Didn't sell enough tickets? And second meeting in November is resource protection, blah, blah, and the stormwater runoff. If you've got issues, specifically show us what your issue is.
Can we talk about that proposal of maybe making a policy of, if we can, enabling a post-development site visit on problematic lots of, you know, these PPLs that we're doing there?
I think that's something that code enforcement should handle. Well, we're not experts to know whether, you know.
Well, you can see if something has worked or not, you can, you can.
How, how soon are you going to go back there? A week, a month, two years?
No, after.
After the project's completed, I think.
You're not going to know if it's working right then.
After season.
It's going to take, yeah, well, there you go. Pick your date.
That's another part of the ordinance that we still have yet to, we've never addressed it. It's at the very end of the ordinance.
Once the certificate of occupancy is issued, that limits our ability down to the property without being invited, but unless you have it out of the condition.
Well, yeah, that was, that's.
Just seems like, because we went for a site walk initially, it might be useful to go back and see what happened afterwards. Since we had the, like, I've got the images of the site that I had now, I'm like, I wonder what it's going to look like afterward? And it would kind of give us a handle on, on what we ask the people to do and what happened, you know?
Yeah, well, and now you're asking them to do is move it back X amount of feet and get a plan from your coming water and soil, which is very difficult to work with at different times or from one of the other groups. So you're really, you're not seeing the plans or anything like that. You're just asking them to contact an expert to help you mitigate dust management practices for the site as many as possible and feasible.
Well, and you think if we want to see the plan, we should, right, ask you to see it just as a reference?
I mean, prior to your decision or after?
No, no, we'd make a decision right before the first site. I mean, after the first site walk, it's just that after they did their, whatever they proposed and whatever we approved, we'd go back and look at it. Just like when we had Gregory over there on, was it Tall Street? Further in, and he was going to, and he had Richard, the landscape engineer there and everything, and he invited us to come back, and I would have liked to go back and see what they did and, because he, you know, he, he was psyched about the thing, and I'd love to see how it turned out, you know? And if we kind of built that in, because we went there initially, then we'd go back and check it out, you know?
It's just a learning tool, if we can use it. I think it might improve our ability to make good decisions.
Yeah, I guess that was what kind of I was about to say is, if that's what we're proposing, then I think that probably is a good thing, so we can use it for future kind of, kind of situations. I mean, if we're just going back to overlook what professionals are saying for the sake of going back, then I'm not sure it is, but if, if we want to use it for the future, then maybe there's a point.
That would mean in the future you'd be specking different types of pine logs to hold back the soils to an oak log or something like that, because you saw the pine isn't only going to last 20 to 30 years, so you'd.
We're just observing, we wouldn't really make any recommendations.
Well, in the future you would, because if you're learning from this, this is something you're going to use in the future. I thought is how it was just.
Well, that's how you want to interpret it, but we'd look at plenty of things, I mean, it's just a nice. I'd like to go back and see what we're right there with that place, I mean, that's, you know, we don't need to look at just the hard examples, it would be great to look at some of those good examples to see what moving it back can do and how.
I think we did 24 last year, so if you did 24 sidewalks plus 24 post sidewalks, 48 sidewalks, you're doing one a week.
I think we only did two sidewalks last year as a landmark, so we'd only have to do, you know, two more to go back to those.
No. It's just an idea to pick, so. I, I think if you only pick on one or two, it's going to look like you're picking on one or two people. So I, I, I mean, you may say if it's 5% greater or less, we don't want to look at it instead of criteria or whatever.
I really want to view it, I mean.
Yeah, I think you'd have to.
You'd have to say consistently, make a decision, stick, stick consistently with your practices.
We wouldn't be second guessing the thing, we'd be observing what happens.
And, and if you had a threshold which, which would trigger the thing, it would, it would sensibly be total. What else would you, what else would you use?
Distance from the water or.
No, no, we wouldn't, maybe second guessing it just to see what happened.
No, I'm not saying that, I'm just saying, I mean, if you.
What they're starting doing.
Exactly. Person, somebody may feel picked on, if, if it's the same person both times. Just because they, they won't look at the site, well, I had the steep one, I had the one that was close, and I had the road behind, and I had to cut every tree, and we had to revegetate.
Well, I mean, they can do it that way now, when we just go to one out of every 20 now, but kind of like we're picking on them, just saying we go back and look at it afterwards too, I mean, that, it's not like.
I think we could come up with some rational triggers, so to speak, of, of one, this might be, you know, good to learn. I think it would be slopes and, and, uh, size of the lot might be, you know, the general impact of, on the lot, it's the questions that came up pertaining to Fos road and Tel Sessos. Can you actually get a machine on this little postage-stainable lot and, and improve conditions post-development? Better than what they are, you know, pre-developed. I think it's a valid question, I think we could come up with fair means to, you know, develop one, one that's a sound. I don't see how we're going to learn otherwise, but because you're kind of operating in that, you sometimes, when you say, I don't really know. What happens?
Anything else?
You said earlier that we were doing the ordinance on the 20th? Or did you say it was the 6th and something else on the 20th?
The, the ordinance is on the 20th, the hearing's on the 6th, correct?
No, the hearing's next meeting.
16th, isn't it?
Oh, 16th.
I, I, I thought I originally said the first meeting in November, we'd do the RP and the, that's what I meant.
Oh, okay.
I thought that's what you said, but I didn't think you said that the second time.
Of course I did. Why would I be this thing?